2022 to order. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Burton?
Here.
Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Mahal? Mahal is absent. Porter?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens? Stevens is absent. Eight present.
Okay. If you'll join me, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dear Lord, we pray to thank you for our country, our community, and our freedoms. We thank you for the men and women that currently serve in our military and the many veterans who have served fighting for the freedoms that we enjoy. We pray for their safety, and we also thank you for our police and fire responders in our community and throughout this country, and pray for their safety as well. We ask that you give us wisdom, compassion, patience, and courage this evening as we conduct our city's business. We ask for these things in Christ's name. Amen.
All right, under Item Three, Public Comment, we have one, I believe, registered. Mr. Carl Johnson, you here? Hi, Carl.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, City Council, for giving me a couple of minutes here to address you. I'm up here to talk a little bit about Growth Dimensions. I know that it's been talked about recently, discussions about cutting funding to Growth Dimensions. Being County Board Chairman, I know the county board cut their funding against my objections to that. When I look at Growth Dimensions, I look at an organization that's the only organization that both the county and the city put money into for economic development here in our community. And when we add up how much money we really put into that, it's almost makes me embarrassed when somebody asks me how much money the county puts in, and now the city's considering cutting their funding also. Economic development is one of the most important things we can do as a city council, as a county board, to help grow our community and grow our community the right way. Unfortunately, as a county board, we can only do so much when it comes to economic development. Many times, we find ourselves the cheerleader in a project, occasionally offering things that we can offer, because as a county, we can't offer water, sewer, and all the other things that a business needs and wants in order to locate into a community. That's where a city like Belvidere comes in, or Poplar Grove, or even Capron, so that they can offer those things to help grow business and grow things. Growth Dimensions has worked hard the past several years to help grow this community in the right ways. And we all know, or we're all familiar with Stellantis, the old Chrysler plant. I can tell you firsthand that Growth Dimensions was very instrumental in pursuing and pushing our legislators down in Springfield to develop some sort of plan to help Chrysler have an opportunity to stay here, to develop some economic incentives for electric vehicles, not just for building them, but for the batteries, for everything else, all the ancillary businesses that would go into that kind of manufacturing. Along with the mayor, myself, R. Juan, Growth Dimensions helped lead that struggle and that fight, and believe me, it was a fight to get anybody in Springfield to do anything. Fortunately, they finally did. We look at formerly Project Kelly, now the General Mills Project. Growth Dimensions has been in on that on the ground floor, pushing and pleading and begging, coming to the county, approaching the county, and asking us for help to help bring this project here. I know that they've worked with the city doing the same thing. It's been a joint effort between three entities to push and make everything we can so that that project is a viable project, and we keep General Mills here in Boone County and in Belvidere. To me, that's important. If we would have stood by and said, no, we're not going to do anything, whether it was the city, the county, or even Growth Dimensions, and let General Mills walk to another community, what a shame that would have been. I just want to encourage you to continue to fund Growth Dimensions, and remember how important they really are. When I was first on the county board, Growth Dimensions focused solely on just retaining businesses that was here. Since that time, they've revamped and they've refocused to bringing other types of businesses here, not just industrial, but other types of businesses. And there's a lot of opportunity, and I think they have a lot of opportunity to grow and to continue to do good things in this community. Please consider that when you're doing your budget. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Carl. Okay, I have one public comment that I thought was interesting, and I want, I thought I would be able to put it into a little bit of perspective. I just received this this morning, and it was regard to the recent COVID-19 update, and I wanted to share these numbers with you, because I think a lot of times we get, we run a fire drill, and we don't really know what the statistics are, so let me just quote this. So we had 3,994,485 cases of COVID, and of those, we had 33,510 deaths. If you look at the percentage, the fatality rate on that is .011, and the survival rate is 99.989%. So these numbers come from the Illinois Department of Public Health, and I thought they were pertinent, because we have had some discussions about where we were headed and about the status of COVID in our community, but I thought the numbers, I hadn't seen those latest numbers like that, and I think a lot of people are not aware of that, so I just wanted to share that tonight. Thank you. And Item Four, under Approval of Minutes, we have the approval of minutes of the Regular Meeting of the Belvidere City Council of April 4th, 2022, as presented. You get a motion to that effect, please. Motion by Alderwoman Prather, second by Alderman McGee. Any corrections? Any discussion regarding those minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. We have, under Item Five, our public hearing for annual budget for 2023, 2022-2023 fiscal year, and... So I'll read this. Notice is hereby given that the corporate authority of the city of Belvidere, Illinois will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, April 18th, 2022, on ordinance 572-H, the proposed annual budget ordinance for the 2022-2023 fiscal year. The public hearing shall take place in the city council chambers at 401 Whitney Boulevard, Belvidere, Illinois. Copies of the proposed annual budget ordinance are accessible for the exam, for examination by the public during business hours at the Office of Belvidere City Clerk, 401 Whitney Boulevard, Belvidere, Illinois, and this was published, Sarah Turnipseed, the city clerk, and it was published in the Boone County Journal, April 7th of 2022. So, we need a motion to open the... All right, so anybody have any comment regarding the public hearing for our annual budget, city of Belvidere? Okay, hearing none. We'll go ahead and close the hearing. 7:11. Open at 7:10. Item Six, under Special Messages and Proclamations, we have Pam Lopez-Fettis with Growth Dimensions here this evening. Pam, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I want to begin this evening by expressing my sincere appreciation for the overwhelming support we've received from businesses and residents of Belvidere and Boone County who like to see continued support for economic growth. Since 2005, the city of Belvidere's investment in economic development has maintained the same without increase. This is almost 20 years of investment at the same level, regardless of the increases that we've seen in development. We have seen a new hospital, an increase in the, I'm sorry, a new hospital, an increase in medical facilities, including those from three major medical groups, OSF Healthcare, Mercy Health, and former Swedish-American UW Health. We have seen primary automotive suppliers locate and grow here that serve multiple automakers, including Magna International and Yang Feng. We've seen food processing companies that have continued to increase their product line, including Dairy Farmers of America and General Mills. RPS Products has located here, Rock Valley College Advanced Technology Center, the first community college president, presence in Boone County, not to mention the many commercial developments. This is evidenced by the increase you've seen in your rooftops, your building permits for residential, commercial, and industrial properties, and the increase in sales and property tax revenue. Growth Dimensions is the voice for the city and for the county. We advocate on your behalf. We generate regional, national, and international attention. We focus on growing the economic base and reducing the tax burdens for your residents. Our contribu, your contribution allows us the resources available to successfully land projects, as you have seen just this month with General Mills, as well as actively work with 75 current open projects and nearly 100 business engagements. I'm honored to work alongside with 23, I'm sorry, 32 volunteers who have served on our Board of Directors that provide Growth Dimensions with strategic, strategic direction. Each represents an entity that has made a commitment to Growth Dimensions and gains nothing other than the desire to see this area flourish economically. The private sector contribute to Growth Dimensions and are located in Belvidere contribute over $372,000 in property taxes each year to the city of Belvidere, and that's 2.8 million total. Although they are not involved in projects, they have been a wonderful source of referrals of potential customers considering or locating here and growing in our community. And before you make your decision tonight on this budget, I want to remind you that Growth Dimensions is a 501(c)(6) nonprofit organization. We're a bipartisan organization. We are not a government entity with consistent source of revenue. Each year, we must generate investments in order to operate and address community challenges, gaps, and services, solutions. We must build partnerships in workforce and education and infrastructure. That is in addition to retaining the businesses in our community, helping them grow, and market our community to outside prospects. On behalf of Growth Dimensions, we ask the city of Belvidere to maintain 55,000 investment in Growth Dimensions and economic growth. Your return on investment is clearly apparent and much more. I want to thank you all for your time and considering what's best for Belvidere. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Any questions? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor Morris. So Pam, I fully understand your value to city administrators and how important the president, presence of Economic Development Department is to the city. Might I add, the county as well, who in my mind have chosen to forego any contribution to growth here by killing wind, then solar development, and now their fair share in our economic development program. The only thing they seem comfortable funding, in my opinion, is an over-budgeted health department. You said at our last meeting that our most taxable income comes from people using our services. So your theory is that bringing young people here for jobs by providing industrial growth spurs them to move here and spend money in our community. I have come back to my beef, if you will, for lack of a better term, with Growth Dimensions. In my mind, people have no problem commuting to jobs. Belviderians commute to Rockford, Marengo, DeKalb, and all over the Chicagoland area. Employees commute to Belvidere as well. Stellantis and their suppliers, General Mills, Dean Foods, and every other major employer in Belvidere and Boone County employ vast number of commuters from throughout the entire region. Many, if not most, actually employ a majority of non-Belvidere residents. What makes them move here and spend money comes down to the quality of life and services we offer. If there is no retail other than Walmart, no Schnucks, no Logleys, no Woodman's, no stores the likes of Target, Home Goods, Hobby Lobby, TJ Maxx, or Kohl's, no family restaurant open past 4:00 PM except for Applebee's, no dispensary, no distillery, heck, we can't even get sidewalk cafes. Our only entertainment venue is the Apollo Theater, which caters primarily to a specific age group. We have nothing for our youth other than amenities offered through our park district. Therefore, our tax base and taxable income, which the city relies on to sustain and maintain the services that we provide, does not grow and becomes stagnant. I am keenly aware, as a lifelong resident, of the land issues we have faced, the longstanding generational Hatfields and McCoys family feuding that stifled development in key areas here. Now that much of the land has now exchanged hands, my hope is that retail and commercial development is within reach and on the horizon with the help of Mayor Morris's never-ending and fruitful efforts to procure investment in the Genoa Road area. My question for you is, now that we have all but secured the construction of Project Kelly and growth along Highway 20, and the Iron Road interchange should, by all calculations, be forthcoming on its own, will your focus remain on industrial, or will you shift gears and market Belvidere to retailers, making a hard push for the quality of life amenities that Belvidere has an unparalleled location and huge potential for?
I think staff will probably agree with me, and correct me if I'm wrong, that our focus has been industrial for attraction to this area. However, that doesn't preclude us from trying to attract also retail and other academic resources. The reason why we focus us on industrial is because it brings in more jobs in those other areas. So for every one job you have in manufacturing brings two jobs in other areas. That includes retail restaurants, it includes storefronts, it includes hospitals, other job support positions. Our focus has been very diverse, as I believe the chairman has indicated, that we've been more diverse than we have ever been. So we do not ignore specific projects, gas stations, fuel centers, restaurants. We've engaged higher end, we've met with the Costco, we've talked about expanding here. We continue to do that. What I think, what we're trying to understand is what their requirements are. So many of them look at traffic patterns in the area. They look at your residents and the demographics of those residents. So they might look at age, education, and other factors that their requirement is. So having an education facility here also attracts different groups that focus on education. We talked about Einstein bagels. They tend to go around colleges. That's something that we would pursue. Other groups that focus around different demographics. So I think that that's what, it's not that we don't want to, we don't support that type of growth. We do. It's, we know, we've talked to businesses and how we have to get to that point, what things that they're interested in, and how we can meet those needs.
But will you actively market Belvidere and the things we have here to, to those people to, I guess, sell Belvidere?
Absolutely. We've been part of groups from the shopping centers, the national group that focuses on shopping centers. We've been part of their group, we've been part of their organizations, we've talked, and we've networked with them. Absolutely. We've worked with the group that owns the South Town Center. We've met with them, we talked about their needs. We put that information on our website to market their facilities. I got a call one Friday night for a gentleman that was looking at a place in a shopping mall, and he was in the area and want to look at another place, wanted me to set it up, so I had to go out there on Saturday morning and help him set it up. We work with all types of business. I don't think we've ever said, no, we can't help you. You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions for Pam? Okay, thank you, Pam.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, moving on, Item Seven, Approval of Expenditures. We have general and special fund expenditures, first in the amount of $1,281,504.97. Could I get a motion for that? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderwoman Prather. Any discussion, any questions, any comments regarding the general and special funds? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So I have multiple, as usual.
Fire away. I don't want to say that. Continue.
Okay. So beginning with page two, this might be something Gina could answer. Down on Heritage Days, Costco picnic tables for $1,899. Gina, I don't, I get that we need picnic tables, but where are we going to store those?
Oh, the picnic tables. So this has been a year-long process. We have been trying to order picnic tables for over a year. We have 10, and they're collapsible, so they're really easy to store. Street Department has made storage racks for them, so 12 fit per storage rack, and they can get picked up with a forklift and just scooted into the corner at the Leaf Building and the Street Department Building. They're not the big bulky wood tables that we're constantly borrowing. So for over a year now, we've been trying to order more of those picnic tables at a reasonable cost, because we all know during COVID, the costs of things went crazy, the ability to obtain things have gone crazy. So the other day, Costco had them on sale for like, cheap. I mean, online, the cheapest I could find online was like $380, and they were still backordered till October, and I think these were like $120 apiece or something. So we, we got them, because A, they were available, B, they were half the price of what we're finding online. But they are, they completely collapsed, so they're no bigger than a typical folding table, and Street Department has storage racks for them.
Thank you. Then on page three, I'm not sure if this is also you, Gina. There's historic preservation, something about stained glass windows, and I think there's another one in community development for another $150 that mentions, on page 32, stained glass windows for historic preservation.
Okay, so I don't have the forms in front of me, but I think I know both of them. One for sure is, so we have the stained glass window fundraiser. Historic Preservation has their own grant program. For properties that are within a district or individually landmarked, we have our own 50/50 facade grant for those, because as we know, older houses are expensive. So the commission does fundraisers throughout the year. They had one on April 2nd, where they partnered up with four local churches, did a stained glass window tour. It snowed, but it still worked. Unfortunately, some of the tickets, and my fault, I did not realize how big of a deal this would become when we started it, so will never happen again, I promise, Shannon. People were buying tickets online over the phone, so we're letting them purchase with their credit card. So now that credit card funding has to get transferred to Historic Preservation, because all the fundraiser money goes into a different account, because it's for their 50/50 grant fund. So all this is transferring the credit card sales that were put into the city system to the historic preservation. So no money lost, no money gained, it's just transferring, and I promise to never use credit cards again. The second thing, is it like $121 or $151 or something like that?
Yes, yes.
We took an ad out in the shopper to advertise the fundraiser, and that is probably the shopper bill.
Okay. Page four. Nelson Carlson Mechanicals, repair and installation for a backflow device for $1,615. Is that you, Danny?
Thank you. I believe that was for this building, if I'm not mistaken. The backflow device was faulty. It wouldn't pass the inspection, so we had to replace it.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then I have a couple on page five. Saznowski Traffic Court?
That's correct. As you'll see, I'm wearing a gimpy wing, so I could not be in court one day, so Saznowski usually covers me when I'm not able to go to court.
Okay. And then, this is probably also you, Attorney Drell, Tyler Technologies, Inco Maintenance for $8,263 on the same page?
No, that's not me. I believe that would be Shannon or Sarah, and it would be the, we have all of our Inco Technology database in the cloud now, and it's probably the annual fee for that.
That's correct. Okay.
That's your entire financial package that handles everything you're looking at right now.
Okay. And then I have a couple for Chief Woody. So page nine. We bought a fire extinguisher for $1,015. Is that just one fire extinguisher, sir?
No, ma'am. Every year, we have to get all of our fire extinguishers inspected and recharged, so that's the bill for all of them that go inside the squad cars and in the patrol areas.
Okay. And then on that same page, Chief, Boone County Auto Body, and it looks like reimbursed for $2,219?
That was an insurance claim. We got the money back.
So that, that's actually a credit?
Is that a credit, Sarah?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and then 10 and 11 and more on 12. There's a lot of training. Is that a whole lot of officers?
Yeah, well, we've got, well, it's a combination of a lot of officers, a new recruit, and then a lot of meals that are required by contract.
Okay, and then I think my last one for you, computer solutions for a Jet Tech Laptop Computer solutions for a Jet Tech laptop replacement for 2,200. We budget for, I think, three a year. Is this one of those or is this separate?
No, we didn't actually start budgeting for replacement of these particular computers until this budget year. So this is something that is coming out of our equipment line item, which we have funds in for this particular replacement.
Thank you. And then I had a couple for Director Anderson, but I guess maybe Danny might be able to answer them.
Who's Director Anderson tonight?
Let's see, page 24. Do you have your thing, Danny? Another, this is Boom County Auto Body and it's, it just says, street chair. Is it deductible 500? What does that mean?
That's the same accident we were referring to with the police department. It also involved the street department.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
We had a boo-boo in the Leaf Building.
All right. And then I had one on 28 for you. Page 28, Vermeer Midwest Drums and Something Else for 4,720.
We had to replace our drums and our Vermeer tree chipper. They were bent. They see a lot of action and it was not feeding the logs or the sticks in properly. So we replaced the drums and we actually had it out for the first time today and just like brand new again.
Is that the one we used for our leaf and branch pickup? Thank you. That's all I had, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderwoman Freeman. Alderman Porter?
I had one for Danny on 26, Ringo Auto Body Repairs and Maintenance Body Repairs for 8,217. Do you know about that one?
One of our trucks, we were hauling leaves out of town and he was going about 55 or so up Route 76. Front tire blew out and it shredded the front fender and part of the hood on that particular truck.
Go ahead. Continue.
This one would be for Shannon. I was going over the last few pages here. Regular Department Payment Report. And there's quite a few here entries that says over budget and says why. I'm assuming is that for yes, that we're over budget in all these different categories?
That would be correct, that that line item is over budget. To what extent, I don't have that in front of me, though.
Okay. I was just curious if that's what it would mean. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Porter. Any other questions? All right, hearing none. We have a motion and a second on the floor then to approve general and special fund expenditures in the amount of 1,281,504.97. All those in favor, when your name is read, answer aye and any opposed, nay.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Okay, motion passed. Thank you. And then we also have water and sewer funds expenditures this evening in the amount of 885,774.27. Could we have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman McGee. Any questions, any comments, any concerns regarding the water and sewer fund expenditures before you tonight? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, when your name is called, will answer aye. Any opposed, nay, when the clerk calls a roll.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Okay. Motion passed. Thank you. And item eight, committee reports and minutes of city officers. Items A through H have been placed, have been placed on file, which leaves us with item I. Minutes of the committee of the whole building planning zoning and public works of April 11th, 2022. Those minutes are in your packet. Could I get a motion to approve those, please? Motion by Alderwoman Prather, second by Alderman Snow. Any questions regarding the minutes of April 11th, 2022 as presented? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. And moving along, item nine, under unfinished business. We have for a second reading, the ordinance budgeting for all corporate purposes for the city of Belvedere, Boom County, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2022 and ending April 30th, 2023. Could? We have motion, but motion to approve, a motion by Alderman Snow. Do we have a second? Second by Alderwoman Prather. Any discussion? Alderman Burton?
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate it. So I believe we all have a list of motions that were submitted in front of us. I didn't know how we were going to address this.
Whatever the motion is that belongs to the alderman that wants to make it, you can make that, make that motion as an amendment to the budget. Alderman Burton?
Thanks again. With that being said, I just see we have two motions here regarding the same item. And I think I'll go ahead and just, once again, I'll, I'll withdraw my, my lower request, if that's okay with everybody.
That's up to you. It's not a motion till it's made, so amendment till it's made.
Thank you.
Alderman Porter?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to amend Exhibit B, non-union fiscal year 23 salary schedule, adjusting the salary of the police chief from 5% above the deputy chiefs to 6% above the deputy chiefs for the reasons previously that I discussed.
We have a motion by Alderman Porter then, and second by Alderman Snow. Any discussion, any comments? I will say that this is a little bit, Alderman Porter had called, had talked to me about this and I had actually, whenever I had sat down and went over this budget, I had decided at that time that I was going to make that a 5%. I think Alderman Porter was right. We talked and I did, I do support this. I think I made an error. Won't be the, it isn't the first, won't be the last. And I think we're talking about one individual here. We're talking about, you know, a 1% for one individual. And I had, in hindsight, obviously, I had thought about all the responsibilities that I've learned since I've been in here since May that comes with policing in this community. And we've had a variety of them. But I will say that as far as I'm concerned, Chief Woody is my only employee. I don't try and micromanage a department. Any problems, go directly to him and vice versa. I think if he has a problem with me, he definitely lets me know. So with that being said, I think we have a good working relationship, but I think the 1% is not going to make or break this budget. And that's Alderman Porter, after we'd had initial discussions, had called and pointed this out, and I do agree with him. So just a little bit of background. Any other discussion? Okay. Hearing none. We have a motion then to amend Exhibit B, non-union 23 salary schedule, adjusting the salary of the police chief from 5% above the deputy chiefs to 6% above the deputy chiefs. All those in favor, when your name is read, answer aye and any opposed, nay, when the clerk calls a roll.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Nay.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Okay. Motion passed. Thank you. Any other amendments to the budget? Alderwoman Frank?
I just want to clarify a little thing. I have like the most on here. I had four. And it's only because I know that we have a tight budget, so I went looking for things that we could take out. It's not easy, so I just want everybody to know it's hard, but I am thinking out for the taxpayer. So whatever it is, it, you know, comes out, it's okay. It's just, this is where I'm coming from.
Alderwoman Frank, you know, you're right. It is a tight budget. We didn't increase the tax levy. I don't think the tax levy has been increased for five years now, budget years. And, but, you know, you have every right. I'd said originally, when I looked at this budget and I sat down with Ms. Hanson, we went over it. We went over it. There are no sacred cows here. This is my first year, but I do believe that, you know, everything should be looked at. So I admire you for, if there's something in here that you see, you have every right to be here and I appreciate it. So go ahead. Do you want to make?
So I, I don't get this. So we're supposed to take these upon ourself to, to make motions tonight with these?
Yeah, those were the motions that, yeah, go ahead.
I thought one would be the mosquito management, you know, that people have their own ways of taking care of mosquitoes, whether it be a Tica Torch or Citronella or skin repellent or whatever. I just thought we're not everybody's, you know, keeper to take care of their mosquitoes. I'm just looking for things that I can see that maybe aren't needed.
I understand. I don't know what that exact, what that amount would be for the?
So for that particular line item, there's a couple of things that come out of it. One is mosquito management is one of them. There's not a particular dollar amount designated to the mosquito management. It's just something that comes out of that line item, which is why the suggestion, if she can certainly, if she wants to take out the removal of that, but there is not a dollar amount assigned to mosquito management in this line item.
We just, excuse me, we just receive an invoice and then we pay it?
No. What's the other line item in that?
Azovir is the other thing that comes out.
Correct. Azovir, which is the company we retained several years ago to help do audits of our partners like ComEd, Comcast, Nikor. We do not have any budget funds for mosquito abatement. It is referenced in the budget. If you want to remove the reference to it, you could. There is no dollar amounts assigned to that. And again, if the city want to procure mosquito abatement during the summer, they would have to come back to the council, get authority to do that anyway.
So the other one I had was to amend the capital schedule for the parking lot number seven for the charging stations, because I thought we were getting them at the county building. But now there's some mix-up. There's not going to be any. So I'd just like somebody to refresh that.
Well, Mr. Anderson, would you like to comment on that at all or?
I'm not really aware of the charging station. There's, there's a grant, correct? A matching grant that we've applied for. Are you talking about lot seven?
Right. It's supposed to be behind the Palo in that parking lot, but now it might not be in that parking lot?
I, I can't, I can't answer that.
Alderwoman Frank, are you talking about your motion? The 110 to 70,000? Okay.
Because there was a grant that covered 70 dollars. Or 70,000.
That's correct. So it was in last year's budget for 70,000 for the rehab of lot five, which is across the street from City Hall. However, we had put in for grant money and that will be determined on May 1st, but it requires matching funds. So our portion of that to match it is the 110,000. Even though it's more than the 70, it would allow us to be able to make the improvements on parking lot number seven. Also, we would be able to do the, oh, we're going to put a cover over there with limestones down to the river. And we won't be able to do that if we don't match those funds. So although initially the 70,000 was in there for a different parking lot, this one requires us to match it. And we thought it would be a good project for downtown to be able to help with parking. That lot will be reconfigured with its egress and ingress and also it will be resurfaced.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
Okay. Thank you. I hope that answers your question.
Okay. The last one was the economics development. I asked to reduce that and I'm just going to go with, I don't want to fight and squabble over this, so I just want to go with the consensus and we'll vote.
Is that a motion?
Well, I want to come to some kind of agreement between everybody so that my motion is, you know, I do want to lower it a little bit. I do think that Pam is important. I'm not saying she's not doing a good job. I just think that when I, my whole thought was to reduce the amount of spending. That's, that's where I'm coming from.
I understand. And that motion would have to have, for the council to be able to even get that on the, for discussion.
Then I make that motion that we reduce that from 55,000 to 35,000.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor then. Any discussion? Alderman Porter?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one comment. I'd like to kind of point out, the city of Rockford, you're talking about growth dimensions, you know, they're focusing on industry. City Rockford is well-known for industry. They focus heavily on that, especially aviation industry. They're well-known for the different aviation companies that they have, their manufacturers like Textron, Sunstrand and such. And we, we see what kind of development they have as far as restaurants and other entertainment-type services over there. And it's, I think in a big part of it is because of the industry that's over there. I mean, they're, they're well-known for that, so I just kind of wanted people to keep that in mind.
Thank you, Alderman Porter. Alderman Snow?
I'm not in favor of this motion. I'm in favor of leaving the 55,000. I think the economic impact that growth dimension provides for us is well beyond the 55,000 that we're going to invest in this on a yearly basis. And I'm going to vote no for that amendment.
Alderwoman Prather?
Thank you. I'm also going to be voting no on this after talking with Pam and getting a better under-
a better understanding about, you know, like, I know the argument's been made, like, oh, they have money in reserves, well, she's already shown that, like, they're already beginning to dip into their reserves, I couldn't in good conscience vote to cut some funding for their organization, knowing that they're already beginning to struggle, that doesn't benefit anybody, and I don't think that that would be wise. Not only that, if we cut that funding, they still have to go out and get more investors to try to make up for that funding and then some, so that's just that much more wasted time that they're going to be spending trying to get more investors to support their organization that hinders their ability to go out and do their job, which is to bring an industry and business to the city of Belvidere and Boone County. Aside from that, one thing you also have to consider is that when we are looking at the other cities, as already has been stated, a lot of these cities in the surrounding area have people who are employed by the city to do what growth dimensions is doing, and if we had to, if we had to pay staff to do what they're doing, we would be paying far more than $55,000 a year to secure an individual just to spearhead that, and that's one person. We get three full-time employees, more so, at the city's disposal to work with the various departments, so no, I don't think it would be wise, I don't think it would be beneficial, and I think it would be detrimental to be cutting funding for growth dimensions.
Thank you. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm really, really struggling with this. I, I've had discussions with Pam about what I see and her focus on industrial, I get it to a point, but at the same time, you know, all the Stellantis suppliers didn't bring us a grocery store, or a restaurant that stays open past 4:00 PM, or a clothing store, or, you know, any of the above, so it's hard for me to make the connection between turning Belvidere into what I, what I think is an industrial park, as opposed to focusing on the quality of life for the people here. I'm hoping that Project Kelly will spur the growth on 20 and Irene Road, and that the new investor on Genoa Road will, will spur some growth out there with the help of growth dimensions, but, you know, I, I think I want to give Pam another chance, and I want to see, I want to see some retail and commercial otherwise come next year or the year after, I don't know that I'll be able to support growth dimensions.
Thank you, Alderwoman Freeman. Alderman Flurry?
Thank you. We've had discussions over the last few weeks about this, and again, I will not support this either, I think taking money away from economic growth is not a good idea to make, to ensure that the city continues to grow, that we can expand our tax base and make sure that we can pay for these services, so I will not be supporting a deficit or a cut to growth dimensions.
Okay, thank you. Alderwoman Prather?
Thank you. I just wanted to also add, you know, let us not forget that we've just come out of two years of COVID, and I think everybody is just beginning to kind of get their feet back, you know, I can't imagine that there were not investors that had to put a halt on a lot of different plans over the last couple of years, not having, knowing how things were going to be turning out, so I think it would be really bad timing to try to pull support, considering that as well.
Thank you. Alderman Snow?
And again, reiterate the fact that by us attempting to reduce their funding just sends a bad message to the investors that we are not friendly toward the expansion, and they're coming here, and that we're not supporting the efforts to get them here.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Snow, any other comments? Alderman Brereton?
Thanks again, Mayor, appreciate it. So, so pretty much, basically, if you put it like this, it's like growth dimensions has this much money, so we're going to give them another 55,000, so stack it on top, you know, those are tax dollars, and they, and this is what the county said, the tax dollars should not just be sitting in the bank idly, we could be doing other things with those tax dollars.
Okay, thank you. Alderwoman Frank?
Well, I took this seriously to try to figure some things to cut, and I noticed it's only three of us out of 10 people that put any input in here. I happen to know that a lot of my constituents, they're not doing so great this year, so when we say we want to give them, we're actually taking money from the taxpayer to pay that. So I just want people to be aware, when you want, when you want to do this, it's all coming from the taxpayers, and you need to represent them.
Thank you, Alderwoman Frank. Alderman, Alderwoman Prather, you had your hand up, I know.
So, as some of you may or may not know, I am the president of the Board of Directors for Boone County CASA, and as a nonprofit organization, you're required to have so much money in reserves, part of that being, when you go to secure grant funding, that's generally part of, that's part of the requirements, and I had questioned Pam on this as well, while it's not specifically a quote-unquote requirement, any wise investor who, or grant funding entity, is not going to hand over any sizable grant funding if there's no security behind that. You're not going to throw grant money at an organization or a company to bail them out, you want to see a return on the investment in the money that you're investing into their organization, so it's a similar situation with growth dimensions as well.
Thank you. Alderman Flurry?
Thank you. You know, we started budget discussions back on February 28th, and to suggest that, because Alderman didn't put any last-minute changes in there that we don't care about the budget is absurd, you know, we've listened to the department heads go line by line, in many hours of committee of whole meetings to hear what their budgets are, and I think that, you know, we are lucky to have some pretty responsible department heads here who have, you know, have trimmed down their budget as near as to the bone as possible, and I, you know, appreciate that you're looking for more ways to, to trim it, but I think that listening to department heads, seeing what the, this particular item would be, how it'd affect people, I think is not the way to try to save money in our budget, I think that we're going to lose more money by cutting this budget by 20,000 as opposed to what growth dimensions does for the community, so I think that it is in the taxpayer's best interest, and that's why there's 10 of us on the council to, each of us have an opinion and represent our constituents, but to say that we don't care about the budget because we didn't have motions is not an accurate reflection of what we do for our citizens.
Okay, any other comment? Okay, we have a motion and a second then on, on the floor. That motion is a motion to amend line item 01-5-610-6840, economic development, adjusting the funds allocated to growth dimensions from 55,000 to 35,000. All those in favor, well, when their name is read, answer aye, and any opposed nay when the clerk calls a roll.
Freeman?
Nay.
McGee?
Nay.
Porter?
No.
Prather?
Nay.
Snow?
No.
Brereton?
Yes.
Flurry?
Nay.
Frank?
Yes.
Two in favor?
Motion failed. Is there any other amendments that anybody wants to present here this evening? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see out of that. Alderwoman Freeman?
I think Alderman Frank had one more, to amend the capital schedule, adding a note that the patrol and annex remodels should be paid for using impact fees. I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second regarding that motion? No second? Okay. Any discussion, any comments? Alderman Snow?
I'm going to be voting no on this.
Okay, you get a chance to vote. Anybody else?
I have something to say.
Alderwoman Freeman?
I, I, Chief, how much money do you get from impact fees, and how much is in that fund, and what do you typically use those for?
Yeah, currently, we have $126,448 in impact fees, and as I understand it, impact fees are used to defray the cost of growth and the impact that it has on services, specifically, just a little bit of history, since fiscal year 19, the police department's requested about $40,000 in impact fees to remodel the annex, and over that period of time, we've spent roughly 27,000, because for the last couple of years, we were on a spending freeze due to COVID, but, and also due to that, we weren't able to accomplish finishing the project, so that's a portion of our request. The other portion is the patrol area, the patrol area hasn't been remodeled since its original construction, which was 1990, well, mid-1990s, and since then, the police department has grown in personnel as well as the type and amount of equipment that we have to maintain and store. We have used, we have used funds that have been donated, primarily by the Nice family, to address some of those storage needs, being our evidence processing room, and most recently, our arms room, council was supportive in accepting those grants and allowing us to make those renovations, we're looking at requesting funding and hopefully continued support from the council in using impact fees to remodel the patrol area, which should have some photos that I passed around earlier in the budget process, on what our intent would be going forward with that, and essentially updating the infrastructure within the patrol room, as well as expanding almost by double the amount of workstations that we'd be able to use, and it would just make that whole process and work area more efficient.
Continue, Alderwoman Freeman.
So, this is for Shannon, so if it goes into the capital schedule, will that then money come out of impact fees, or does that just have to be one of his requests to use impact fees for that?
So we'd actually leave it in the capital schedule, but just make a notation, if you have a copy of your cap, capital schedule, that it will be paid from impact fees, like we've done with a couple other ones where EPA loan program, things like that, so we'll just note on there that it will be paid from impact fees.
Okay, thank you.
Just very briefly, the mayor actually leaned over and asked me the question, and may have dawned a couple of the other Aldermen, is this a proper use for these kinds of fees, these impact fees? The police and public works, and the fire and the city admin, impact fees are not typical impact fee, impact fees that you see within your subdivision code, they're imposed only through the annexation agreement process pursuant to our code, so we do have the ability to use them for any purpose that we wish to, any public purpose that is, however, I would encourage you to use them for things like this, or to procure land or new buildings, capital-type expenditures, because they, you only get these fees once, and then they go away, it's not a recurring income, so would not use it for recurring costs.
Any other questions or comments? Alderman Snow?
So, by voting no, all this does is really, it doesn't pigeonhole anybody where the funds are, because ultimately, when the funds need to be expended, if they can come out of the cap, out of the impact fees, they will, or they can, it doesn't really do anything one direction or another, is that correct?
Like I said, we can make the designation where they're coming from, if it's, if they don't come out of impact fees, obviously, then they'll come out of the capital line item.
Okay, and just a reminder to the council, any other, any development that we, we get will add to the bottom line that the chief had mentioned, I think it was 126,000 and change, so that, that number will increase, I think it's a question of, do you want to use, do you want to do the improvements? You know, I think we have, we have, it is in the budget, if you want to earmark where those funds come from, then so be it, but I think that's the only question here. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you again, so it still has to be approved by the council to do the remodel, regardless, even if it's in the capital budget, earmarking it with only funds from impact fees basically will, will stop an Alderman from making a crazy motion like, let's use ARPA funds.
Okay, any other discussion? Any other comments? Alderman Snow?
With, with that, squad cars and that can be also purchased using the impact fees, correct?
I think they can, but I'd actually want to double-check that.
You can use them for, you can use them for squad cars, tasers, bulletproof vests, computers.
And, and I think at that point, we would be better off leaving it flexible, in case we have a need for additional cars, for whatever reason, whether maintenance issues, and we need two additional squad cars that we weren't expecting, so just tossing that out there.
Okay, any other comments? Any other questions, discussion? All right, hearing none then, we have a motion to amend the capital schedule, adding a note that the patrol and annex remodels shall be paid for by using implicitly impact fees. All those in favor, well, when their name is read, answer aye, and any opposed nay when the clerk calls a roll, please.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Nay.
Snow?
Nay.
Brereton?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Six in favor?
Motion passed. Thank you. Item 10 under new business, we have for first reading, ordinance number 573H, that is an ordinance granting a special use to allow in-vehicle sales or service drive-through within the general business district located at 1554 North State Street, had no action here, this is first reading. Item B, we have ordinance number- Okay, is there any other amendments? To be made? Okay, so, hearing none, we have, uh, could I get a motion to pass?
You already had that motion, so you asked for a mo- a vote on the motion-
To amend?
-to approve the budget as amended.
Okay. Motion to approve the budget as amended? Could I get that in a motion?
You already got the motion.
Oh, okay.
Just a vote on it.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments? Any other questions? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor, uh, will say aye. Any opposed, nay, when the clerk calls a roll, please.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Brerton?
No.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
No.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Six in favor?
Motion passed. Thank you. Item ten under new business, um, we have for first reading, ordinance number five seventy-three H. That is an ordinance granting a special use to allow in-vehicle sales or service drive-through within the general business district located at one-five-five-four North State Street. Uh, had no action here, this first reading. Item B, we have ordinance number five seventy-four H for first reading, an ordinance granting a special use to allow planned development within the planned business district, district located at two-zero-zero-five Gateway Center Drive. We have item C, ordinance five seventy-five H for first reading, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement between the city of Belvidere and Skinnell Properties. Number five-five-four LLC, MCJ Limited Liability Company, Anderson Trust, number ninety-six, dated, dated September twenty-fifth, nineteen ninety-six. Mildred S. Cummings Declaration of Trust dated April sixth, nineteen eighty-five. Wayne A. Shattuck Family Trust and Shattuck Family Trust Agreement dated December thirteenth, two thousand and seven. We have items, we have item D, ordinance number five seventy-six H for first reading. An ordinance annexing certain territory lying north of US Route twenty, east of Irene Road, and south of the Union Pacific Railroad to the city of Belvidere, Boone County, Illinois. We have item E, first reading, five seventy-seven H, an ordinance approving a preliminary plat- titled Kelly Farms Subdivision. We have item F, ordinance five seventy-H for fir- five seventy-eight H for first reading, an ordinance approving a final plat titled Kelly Farms Subdivision. We have item G, ordinance number five seventy-nine H for first reading, an ordinance granting a zoning district change from rural holding district to heavy industrial district, uh, located at north, northeast Irene Road and Grand Highway. And we have item H, uh, ordinance five eighty-H for first reading, an order, an ordinance granting a zoning change, zoning district change from rural holding district to general business district located at northeast Irene Road and Grand Highway. All those will be coming back to you at the second reading. Uh, moving on, we have motions forwarded from the committee of the whole building, planning, zoning, uh, public works of April eleventh, twenty twenty-two. We have a motion to that effect, please. One. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We have, uh, motions out of planning zoning. Chairman Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, a motion to approve the request for temporary use permit to hold the Welcome to Spring Festival, twenty twenty-two festival on May twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth, twenty twenty-two in the parking lots of Fiesta Market and RP Lumber.
Okay, we have a motion out of committee. Is there any discussion regarding that motion? Any comments? I know we have the applicant here this evening. Uh, he can speak if he needs to, or if he wants to, but otherwise, uh, it's up to the council. Would you like to hear from the applicant, or do you want to call the question to vote? Okay. All right. All those in favor will answer aye. Any opposed, nay, when the clerk calls a roll?
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Brerton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Okay, motion passed, thank you. And a motion out of public works, Chairwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Your Honor. B, motion to approve the proposal from CES Inc. to complete the redesign of the Newburgh number-one lift station in an amount not to exceed seven thousand four hundred dollars. This work will be paid from line item number six-one-dash-five-dash-eight-two-zero-dash-six-one-nine-zero.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion on the floor out of committee. Do we have any discussion regarding that motion? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So, Danny, um, Brent was explaining how, um, the old pump didn't come in, the one we ordered, and got delayed, and then you went through and found it needed to be majorly upgraded. Um, I mean, I'm only asking this because it's, um, Newburgh Road. The, the needed upgrades didn't have anything to do with, um, Project Kelly and the maybe added strain on that area?
Absolutely not.
Thank you.
Just my understanding, these were just simply, um, maintenance, right?
Basically, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions on the motion? All right. Hearing done, um, all those in favor will signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay, when the clerk calls a roll, please?
Snow?
Aye.
Brerton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Continue, Chairwoman Freeman.
Thank you. C, motion to approve the twenty-twenty-two outdoor warning siren system annual preventative maintenance agreement with Braniff Communications in the amount of five thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars.
Okay, we have motion out of committee. Any questions or discussion regarding that motion? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you.
I, I, this just crossed my mind. Um, are some of these sirens in actually the county? Or are they all in annex territories? And does the county have any or share any expense in these?
We, all these are in city limits. Uh, the county, I don't know, I can't speak for the county whether they own their own, but I knew no bonus township has quite a few. Uh, I'm not sure. Go ahead, Gina.
Okay, so, we're only servicing the ones that are in city limits and county does their own thing?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, so, we have a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-two outdoor warning system, siren system, annual preventative maintenance agreement with Braniff Communications in the amount of five thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. Um, all those in favor, will, when their name is read, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, when the clerk calls a roll, please?
Brerton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Uh, Alderwoman, uh, Chairman, Chairwoman Freeman, go ahead.
Thank you. D, motion to approve the use of approximately six hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funds in fiscal year twenty-three for the Southwest Tower Rehabilitation Project, and the use of approximately seven hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funds in fiscal year twenty-three for engineering fees and initial construction costs for the primary clarifier upgrades.
Okay, we have a motion out of committee. Any questions, any comments, any discussion regarding that motion? All right. Seeing none. Uh, all those in favor will answer aye. Any opposed, nay, when the clerk calls a roll, please?
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Brerton?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you, Chairwoman Freeman. Uh, motions of public safety, uh, Chairman Stevens is absent this evening. And, uh, Alderman Flurry, would you please help us out here?
Yes, sir. E, motion to accept a three-thousand-dollar grant from Walmart for the purchase of two new canine kennels and exercise equipment for the Belvidere Police Department.
Um, Chief, when you get the kennels, will they have to have the concrete base? And will they also come with a doghouse?
Uh, those are all options that we could look at. We've done both concrete and we've done, uh, the, uh, what's that type of decking? Um, composite decking. So, we've done it both ways. Um, and it's, uh, something we'll have to, uh, confer with the handler on what they want for their particular yards. We've had pros and cons for both. Uh, the, uh, composite decking can be transferred from one handler to the next. Uh, concrete is, uh, less hot. So, it's, uh, so, we have that general discussion with the, uh, the handler, depending on, you know, um, their yard, what they want, and take those other considerations into account as well.
But pretty much, you'll have to have something so that's not all muddy?
Yes, yes, we will put something at the bottom. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the motion on the floor? All right, hearing none, all those in favor will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, when the clerk calls a roll, please?
Frank?
No.
Freeman?
Nay.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Brerton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Okay.
Six in favor?
Thank you. Motion passed. Uh, continue, uh, the Chair, Chairman, Chairman Flurry?
F, motion to approve the proposal from TNT Painting in the amount of nine thousand four hundred dollars for painting Fire Station Number One.
Okay, we have a motion out of committee. Uh, any questions, any discussions regarding that motion? Yes, uh, Captain Shadle, Captain Shadle?
You had a question about the painting quote, and you asked when it was going to be done?
Oh, okay.
Yep, and I didn't know at that time. Uh, it's going to be done at the end of May. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Captain. Uh, any other questions? Comments? All right, hearing none, uh, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, uh, will, when their name is read, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, when the clerk calls a roll, please?
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Brerton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed. Uh, Chairman Flurry?
G, motion to approve the proposal from Barkhold Door Company in the amount of four thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars for training room door at Station Number One.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor out of committee. Any questions, any comments, discussion regarding that motion? All right, hearing none, uh, all those in favor will answer aye. Any opposed, nay, when the clerk calls a roll, please?
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Brerton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you.
Item H, motion to approve the proposal from Ice Spinello in the amount of five thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents for door locks at Station Number One.
Okay, we have a motion out of committee. Any questions regarding that motion? Any comments? All right, hearing none, all those in favor will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, when the clerk calls a roll?
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Brerton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Okay. And last, uh, Chairman Flurry?
Aye. Motion to approve the proposal from Rock River Services for fifteen Motorola APX four-thousand radios, not to exceed forty thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty cents, with monies coming from fiscal year twenty-two capital funds in the amount of thirteen thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars and ten cents, with the remainder coming from ARPA funds.
Okay. A motion out of committee, discussion, Alderman Snow?
For some reason, I thought we, there was still money in that account that, for stuff that you didn't use, that we would be expending part of that forty thousand so that wouldn't necessarily be the remainder. Um, am I missing something there? Because I know we, the cost, um, was originally thought to be thirteen thousand, but I thought ultimately, you still had, um, I want to say nine grand or nineteen grand left over from funds that weren't used out of that line item to help go for the forty grand in radios?
That's correct. There was some extrication equipment that was in the capital expenditure for fiscal year twenty-two that wasn't purchased, and it was around nineteen thousand.
So, ultimately, we're talking forty thousand minus the thirteen, minus the nineteen as well. Is that correct? So, the ARPA money is not going to be, um, looking like roughly, um, twenty-seven thousand. It's going to be minus the nineteen thousand from that as well.
That would be up to you guys, depending on how you made the motion. There's also...
Real quick, um, I had had some discussion with, uh, Ms. Hanson regarding this, and, um, I believe one of the reasons why the council pursued, uh, the purchase, um, was because of the price hike that looks like, uh, it probably would take effect. Um, I don't have those exact numbers in front of me, but I believe if we, uh, could approve to do the ten, and then, uh, I think the cutoff on that is May ninth, um, that we have to have that in, so perhaps, um, we could, uh, get the other, uh, five then, uh, in time, uh, under next year's budget. I don't, Ms. Hanson, did I characterize that right?
Yeah, one thought we had, um, I, I know the idea was to get additional radios before the price increased on May ninth, um, which actually could be done a couple of different ways. There are, we have in this year's capital, the five that, um, Captain Shadle had requested, and we also have five for fiscal year twenty-three as well, which technically, since the budget has been approved, um, we can, you could purchase the five radios or however many under this fiscal year, and then at the beginning of May, order the remaining five under that capital schedule as, as it was just approved.
Okay. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, I just, I don't think that this is appropriate use for ARPA funds. I don't think that's what they were intended for, first of all, and, um, I don't see a problem with getting the ones in this year's budget, which, obviously, they weren't super, super needed because you waited until, you know, two weeks before the end of the budget year to request them. And then, next year's budget, because we're so close to May first, to go ahead and, and giving those, um, but I don't think we should get all fifteen of them, and I don't think we should use ARPA money to do it. And, um, I believe that the extrication hydraulics tool that was in your capital last year for nineteen thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars that you didn't get just got forwarded to this year. So, it's not like it went away, it just got moved up a year, right? Right, so that's still in the capital budget.
So, actually, the current year capital budget's still in place through April thirtieth. I think what Ms. Hanson was possibly recommending is that you could amend the motion that's on the floor to provide for purchasing five of the radios at a cost not to exceed... What's the five radios?
Four-ten.
Thirteen-three-foury-four-ten out of fiscal year FY twenty-two, the current fiscal year, and to approve an additional five radios under the fiscal year twenty-three budget, which was just approved, at the same, is that the same price? An additional price of thirteen-three-foury-four-ten, so two different purchases, both approved tonight, one out of this year's current budget, one out of the FY twenty-three budget, but then they could both be ordered, one invoicing this budget, one invoicing next year's budget, and order before May ninth, so you get, take advantage of the tax, of the savings and cost.
I'll make that amended motion?
If I got that correct.
That's correct.
Okay. So...
With no money, with no money coming out of ARPA?
Basically, then, uh, the amendment would be, uh, five radios for thirteen-three-foury-four- thirteen-three-foury-four-ten, excuse me, I didn't have my microphone on, I'm going to get a call. With the remi- uh, for budget year twenty-three, uh, in the amount of thirteen thousand three forty-four-ten, uh, is that correct?
Yes.
With no ARPA funds being used? Okay. Do we have a second? Okay, second by Alderwoman Frank. Alderman Porter, first?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. So that accounts for 10 radios. What about the other five? Maybe I missed something here.
Alderman Porter, the other five radios, indeed there'll be a price increase, but those are budgeted in fiscal year '24.
Okay, Alderman Snow?
I, I think we should get the full 15. I'm going to vote down on this amendment made, and we need to get to 15, even if we wind up using the ARP money, and they can use the 19 grand out of the capital fund that was already there as well, thereby not using as much of the ARP fund in the first place. So I'm in favor of the original motion of 15.
Okay, thank you. Alderwoman Prather?
This is for Captain Shadle.
Sure.
So if they don't go ahead and get all 15, I thought the whole reasoning behind why we settled with 15 was because the department's currently short radios and has to share them more or less?
So that's correct. Right now, the vehicles are placed in seated positions, or the radios are in seated positions on the vehicles, and the guys come in and use those. We'll come up with something to do the best we can and get those into the hands of the guys that need them the most, and potentially use some other radios that haven't gone end of life yet to accomplish that. We may be able to do it with the 10. I'm not sure. We were anticipating this process taking time, so just getting the 10 is better than just five. So we'll be able to make that work as long as, and I know you guys are trying to stay within the guidelines of using funds appropriately and having everything budgeted for, and things like that.
I have more questions.
Yes.
So Shannon, can you elaborate on what specifically ARPA funds can be used for?
So there's different ways to claim ARPA funds. They can be for project-specific, or you can claim lost revenue. By claiming lost revenue, those funds can really be used for any operational, anything you would normally use funds for during your course of your normal operations.
So more or less, it's kind of, it was determined after the last meeting that maybe this isn't the best use for the ARPA funds. Is that where we're going with that?
No, I don't, I think we have a motion, a second on the floor now, and we need to stick within the motion that we have. But, I mean, you can deduce it however you want, you know, regarding to use it for ARPA, with ARPA funds or not. I mean, the motion on the floor is to not, is what the amendment is on the floor. So, yes.
So Captain Shadle, is this, I guess in your opinion, without having these radios, are we putting any of our firefighters in harm's way by them not having the proper communication?
No, ma'am. We'll be able to use what we have and ensure safety, for sure.
Thank you. Alderman Snow?
So with this upcoming expenditure in the first week or so of May, do we not have to approve that as a council, and do we have enough time to have that cycle through a committee meeting and a full council meeting in order to approve that in the timely fashion, in order for them to order the additional 10 at the cost-effective amount?
If the motion to amend passes, you're approving it tonight. They turn around and order them.
Right. But it's coming out of the next year's fund.
Yeah.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be actually ordered in the next, it'll be invoiced for the following year, but you're just approving the expenditure tonight.
Okay, Captain Shadle?
Mayor, I just wanted to make sure the amount was correct. I have on the quote $13,477.10. I think it was misspoken, a few dollars.
Looks like it might be on the... Did I do it correctly? How much was that?
$13,477.10. Correct. $13,477.10, okay.
Does the moving agree?
Does the individual who made the motion agree in the second? Okay. Okay. Is there any other discussion? Thank you for that. Any other discussion regarding motion on the floor? All right, all those in favor will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, when the clerk calls a roll, please?
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
No.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Nay.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Six in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Oh. Okay, so, yeah, we have to vote on the motion as amended then. All those in favor of the amended motion, with the amount of $13,477.10 for fiscal year '22, and then the same amount under fiscal year '23, and no ARPA funds being used. All those in favor will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please?
Snow? Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Motion passed, thank you, and that's all we have tonight. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please? Motion by Alderman Prather, second by Alderman McGee. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. For the record, we adjourned at 8:36 PM. Thank you, everybody.